Good evening. This is the Walpole Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight is Wednesday, July 10th. It is 7:04. The first case we have tonight is case number 2222, Naponts Village LLC. This is the 40B on Pleasant Street. And unfortunately, just a half hour ago, I was told one of our board members cannot be here tonight. An emergency situation arose. And I think the best thing for us to request is that the applicant...
We would ask for a continuance so the board can be here.
Yeah.
He can worry about his kid. That's more important.
Yeah. And so, continuance, what are we looking at for...
Our next meeting is the, I think it's the first Wednesday in August. So that'd be the 7th.
August 7th. Okay. And I know a number of people are here for that tonight, and I'm sorry, we're not going to take, we're not going to take any testimony, and that's because we need to have as many voting members as possible for this case. So, at the request of the applicant, we would like to continue this until August 7th with an extension of time until, do you want to do the end of August?
Sure.
Okay. August 30th?
30th.
Yep. Okay. August, extension of time until August 30th. Does somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion? Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Matthews. You're welcome. Thank you. This, like I said, this just came up.
I'll email it tomorrow.
Okay. The next case we have is very close by to the Pleasant Street site. It's case number 24-9, 23 Arbor Court. Special permit under section 6C4A of the Walpole zoning bylaws to allow a single-family dwelling on a lot in addition to the existing two-family dwelling. So, is the, let me see what we have for correspondence on that.
Just to confirm, we all write with town council.
What's that?
We all write with town council for the rest of the night.
Yes, we are. Yeah.
Have a good night.
Does any board members, do you have anything for town council?
I did, I don't know, I had a question regarding a subsequent case that's coming up, but I can, we can, I can speak with you separately on that, if I talk to you directly. It doesn't have to be in an open meeting.
Sure.
Just regarding the Pinnacle 40B and then the 40A that's being applied for on the same property.
Go through Patrick.
Through Patrick. Great. Thanks.
I've read some of those questions already.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so the notice that was in the paper for this site is, hearing will be held on Wednesday, July 10th at 7:00 PM on the application of Daniel Bellotta, case number 24-9, with respect to property at 23 Arbor Court within the general residence zoning district. Application is for a special permit to allow a single-family dwelling on a lot in addition to the existing two-family dwelling, although all are invited and encouraged to review the plans prior to the public hearing. We have a few pieces of correspondence on this. We have a letter from some of the neighbors that's been entered into the record. We have a letter from the town engineer. And there's a number of issues, the seven issues that the town engineer has outlined that need to be looked at or considered in the hearing. We have, from the fire department, interconnected smoke and carbon monoxide detectors will be required per the building code. No further comments at this time from the fire department. The board of health has no comments at this time. The site is on town. So, the planning board has no comments at this time. So, at this time, if the applicant, if you want to introduce yourself for the record and explain what you're proposing for the site.
Yes, thank you. Vincent Aiello, I am going to be doing the construction. It's my nephew, Dan Bellotta, who is representing his father. And we're basically converting an existing structure into a third condo. We already have two in the front, which is 19 and 21 Arbor Court. This was given 23 as an address. I did notice some of the typos that the engineer did do on the plot plan, and he will address those and correct them. There is no major changes to the dwelling, so it's basically just going to be converted into a third unit on the property.
Okay. And I looked at the plan, and it appears to meet the, it meets all the setbacks. And so, what you're doing is, there's a large garage there right now?
It is, correct.
And that will be turned into a, into a single-family home. On the, on the plan, it looks like somebody sketched in...
John.
Is there an updated?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that shows 24 feet from the sideline. Okay. I do have one question. You said that this, you referred to it as a condo. Is there, is this a condominium documented site? So...
It is.
So, the existing duplex is, it's not a two-family, it is a condominium?
Condo, yes.
In separate ownership?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any, do you want to walk us through the, what you're proposing as far as the driveway and anything like that?
The driveway is basically existing coming up Arbor Court, and as you can see on the plot plan, it just, it's highlighted in red. It just takes a right, right down by 19 Arbor, and just swings around. There is going to be some modification and relocation of fences there, existing fences that were put in. So, we are going to relocate those, and we will show those on a, an updated plot plan for you, for the building department so they have it also.
Yeah. So, one of the things, there's been some concern about, from some of the neighbors, on the concerns about the adjacent development as far as traffic going maybe over to Arbor Court from Maguire Park. Is there a way that you could put the fence to eliminate that?
Yes, we can, we can run the fence right down the property line, all the way down. I know that there is another project that's going to be developed. I don't know, I know they own that strip that goes all the way out to Arbor Court, so I don't know what their intentions are. I haven't seen any, any of those plans. I don't know how they're proposing. I know that they were talking about some type of emergency exit out that way.
It's not going to go through there, so...
Okay. Again, that doesn't concern us.
Right. But it might help, it might help, if you're relocating the fence, to locate the fence so that there's no way that traffic can come through that property and out to Arbor Court. Okay?
That can be done.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I was going to mention, town engineer mentions locations of the sewer and water services. Those go through Maguire Park, correct, for that property?
Correct.
So, if the potential projects that was previous to this one goes forward, there can be, obviously, potential reconstruction of Maguire Park. There was discussion of, you know, a new water line, new repaving. So, if the applicant is going to tap into that, it's probably best to wait until that process completes before they tap into that. There's usually the concern about digging up the road twice. So, if it's going to already be dug up once...
Well, that, the line you're referencing right now does come up Maguire Park...
Yep.
And goes into that strip of grass that's there.
Yep.
And 19 and 21 is tapped off of that line.
Yep.
So, it, again, I'm assuming they're going to increase the size coming up. Again, I don't, I haven't seen any plans for the new...
It's going for 6.8, but yeah.
So, to answer your question, we can tap into that line.
But, to your point, Patrick, I think you're talking about coordinating with the town engineer to make sure that...
It's from a timing standpoint, I think.
That one's done right.
Yes.
But 19 and 21 are existing, already into the existing line that's coming up off Pleasant Street. So, if they are going to increase the size of that line, we may have, also have to ask to tie in 19 and 21 along with 23.
Gotcha.
Do you want, you follow me?
Yeah, yeah, follow, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Do any, board members have any questions on this?
So, the existing garage, does that provide parking for the two existing condo units?
It does not.
Okay. And where will the parking be for that residence, the third unit that you're proposing?
If, if you look at your plot plan, it'll be right to the left side of the building, of the structure, looking at the front of the structure.
So, it'll be a surface, oh, not, not a garage space, but just a surface spot?
Yes. And we just use compacted gravel. We don't put asphalt down.
So, you see how, that's going to be the garage doors on that side?
Well, it sounds like there won't be a garage anymore. It'll be...
Now, this is the new, the new left, and if you're left here, there is a garage.
Oh, there is.
So, they're going to have a garage on the left hand side. This is what he calls, this is the front, yeah.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions from board members?
John?
Yes.
You mentioned you'd be, sir?
Sorry.
Okay. You mentioned you'd be relocating the fence that's existing now between the garage and the existing duplex condo?
That's going to be removed.
So, that'll be removed. So, will the, will there be fencing around the entire perimeter of the property then?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And am I reading this correctly? This is going to be a four-bedroom unit?
That is correct.
Four bedrooms, okay. And do you feel that you have adequate parking for a four-bedroom unit for the residents and potential guests?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be a 24-foot, it'll accommodate four vehicles.
The driveway in front of the garage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then guest parking, in case they have company?
In front of the home, in front of the building. There's plenty, there's plenty of land there.
Okay. So, there won't be any armed street parking? It's pretty tight down there. I couldn't even turn around without going into your driveways.
No, there will be plenty.
There won't be any street parking? Do you allow, is there street parking now? Maybe Anna Butter might make a comment later, but do you, are you aware that there's any street parking for the existing two-family duplex?
No, they, they have their own dedicated parking.
Okay. All righty. And your trash pickup is typically the barrels out front?
Correct.
So, the rear property will have to drag their barrels out from, okay?
Correct.
And does the condo association take care of their own plowing, and what do they do with the snow?
They do take care of their own plowing, yes.
Okay. Do you have an area in the back for snow storage so that they...
There is. Directly straight ahead past the front of the building, there is.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other board members' questions before we open it up to the public? Is there anybody from the public that wants to comment on this? Questions or... Come on up.
Alan Williams, 15 Maguire Park, Walpole. I just want to make sure I understand what's been said. It looks like these two projects, Naponts Village and 23 Arbor Court, you expressed our concerns about separating with the fence along the property line. I just wanted to make sure that the Arbor Court project won't say, "Well, I thought Naponts Village was going to build the fence," and vice versa, and nothing gets done. Your board member said, "Are you going to fence around the entire perimeter of the property?" If they do that, that will accomplish the concern that we have, that we've been expressing all along about Maguire Park not being used as an exit for either project. So, do I understand correctly that that's what they're going to do?
So, it's not shown on the plan yet. They're going to have to come back with a revised plan. But, yes, the, what they've said is...
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, yeah.
I don't want any misunderstanding.
We are going to fence in our property line. We're not going on the Maguire Park side. So, it's, you know, it's approximately 25, 30 feet, you know, on our property line, going down, you know, parallel with our driveway.
I understand.
But not on Maguire Park's side.
That's correct.
That's, that's the other part, whatever their situation is, you know. We will put our fence on the...
I understand.
It does not prevent...
I don't want to comment on that, but...
That's what we're putting out, a fence.
No. You're putting your fence on what I'm looking for the...
On our property line.
You can only do so much.
Correct.
And they're good neighbors, quite honestly. They've been good neighbors. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that one doesn't say, "Well, I thought you were going to do it," and so forth. But you just made it clear. Thank you.
As long as you...
I understand.
Okay.
And I think the board does, too. That was the concern that I had. Thank you very much.
No. Thank you. One thing. You talked about fencing the entire perimeter of this, and I, if that's what you're going to do, that's, that's fine. That's up to you. I think what we're most concerned about is...
I understand, I understand.
My plot plan that I have. I just want any misunderstanding.
Our property line runs from Arbor Court, runs down here.
Okay. So, this dash line is your property, or the real line?
No.
Oh, the solid, okay.
The dash, right down here, along this dash, okay?
Yep, okay.
We will fence that in, but the area that they're concerned about, Maguire Park, comes up here. There's a long grass that goes all the way down to, that is not owned.
It's the messy part, yes.
Correct.
Very messy. It's just not taken care of.
No, I didn't, I didn't want any misinterpretation with the fence. I didn't want, our fence is coming down here, not down here.
Okay.
Yeah, on your property.
I'm good.
We get it.
Yeah, no, I get that. I was going to ask about the 12.55.
Because we can't control what goes there.
Right.
We can control what goes here.
Right.
Yep.
I just want to make sure.
Sure.
Right here. Then when you go across the back and then...
It's already here.
Yes, I saw that, yep.
Coming down about, I think it comes down here and it cuts across this way. We will continue it down here. I don't know, you know, if we're down here, we might have closed that fence.
So, Maguire Park, when I drove down there, that came, I saw like a beaten path of kind of old, old tire marks.
That's like, that's a great idea.
That's what's right there.
Yeah, but this part, yeah.
Years ago, way before, if you're a young lady, but way before, when there was a three, four family here, not to give you guys boring, there was a four family here. There used to be a hotel way back. Maguire Park, Arbor Court did not exist. Maguire Park came here, under this. This was Maguire Park, this was Maguire Park, the four family was here. My parents bought that. And then we built the house here. While we did that, we called this Arbor Court, they made us call that an Arbor Court extension. And the town eliminated this because of the 911, and they gave this an Arbor Court name, and they deleted the Maguire Park. But this was one circle one time. It went, well, you saw that little grass, that came around and connected back in the horse.
Wow. Thank you for the, thank you for the explanation.
I wish I could put that in.
Okay. Are there any?
I was going to say, Mr. Chair, do it. I just kind of want to address for the public what exactly the discussion was for the fence, so that's going to...
Yeah. So, the applicant has shown on the plan that they plan on having fencing, definitely along the, the right-hand side of the plan, and probably the entire, fencing the entire property. But the part that we're most concerned about is separating it from Maguire, Maguire Park, and that's what they've shown. Okay. Anybody else from the audience with some questions? Okay. So, there's a number of items from the town, did you get the town engineer's letter?
We did, we received it.
So, I think...
We'll have our surveyor address them.
Address all those, address all those issues, update the issue as far as the number, the numbering, everything that the town engineer brought up. But I think, unless, do people have any major concerns?
No. Do, I didn't really notice because it was hard to discern between the unkept section of that land beside you. Do you have any tree plantings or anything that you're going to cut down and then replace, or are you going to leave everything you have there?
There was nothing.
It didn't look like anything.
It's clear.
Right. Okay. All right.
Okay. And, you know, the other thing, definitely, as far as how you're going to tie into the sewer, sewerage and water, that's something you're going to have to talk to the town engineer about. But I think what, what I feel is that nobody seems to have any questions. The neighbors seem to be in support of it, you know, that we've got one letter or two letters. Mr. Williams?
I'm sorry.
Nope, don't, we want to make sure this is all done nicely.
When 19 to 21 was constructed, they limited the construction equipment to Arbor Court. We didn't see any on Maguire Park, and we hope that that continues with this addition. As I said, they've been good, so, but I thought we should mention it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lauren, would you just put that as a condition?
Yeah, of course.
You know, access to the site will be through Arbor Court. Take care of it now.
Right.
Okay. Anybody have anything else on this? Okay. Do you want to come back on, how's August 7th looking?
Yep.
Do you want to come back on August 7th with a revised, revised plan addressing the concerns of the town engineer?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody's good with that? Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion to continue this case until August 7th at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall?
So moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Bob. All those in favor of continuing the case, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carry. Okay. Good luck. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Are you going to step down?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, John.
Sorry. Don't, don't go yet. Sorry. So, Lou's not here yet. He had a bit of a, like, not conflict, but...
So, Mr. Petrosi is also meeting with Conservation Commission tonight. So, when he reached out, he knew that we had Naponts Village first. So, the anticipation was that we had Naponts Village and Arbor Court, his, he would probably be on closer to eight. We can go down, check Conservation, see if he's available. But he wanted to take care of some small business items first.
Yeah. Why don't we, why don't we do the minutes?
Yeah.
So, just to let everybody know, we're waiting for, for the applicant who is down the hall with Conservation. And usually at the end of the meeting, we do the minutes from previous meetings, so we're going to just do that at this time. Sorry. Sorry if you're sitting here listening to us discuss the minutes from previous meetings, but we will, we'll be getting to the, the case for Pinnacle very, as soon as we can. So, did people have a chance to review the minutes? 'Cause I, I did review them. Of course, I've read them online, I didn't print them out and go through them, but when I saw, everything seemed, seemed correct, even things that I wanted to make sure were in there, were included, but there might've been some typos of things like that.
June 5th, first?
Yeah, yeah, so...
I have one small little typo on the Fox Hill Drive, 248. I made the motion to approve the special permit, but then on the vote, it says 500, but then they have me as name.
Oh, thank you.
And small, but...
Nope. All right. Anything else, Tim?
Nope.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else on the June 5th? Does somebody wanna make a motion to approve the minutes of June 5th, 2024?
Still moved.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion on the minutes? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay.
It's just a typo on my name on page three that I can see.
Page three?
Halfway down. I've got a new name.
Oh, geez.
That's all right.
Sorry.
I have other names. My alias is...
Ms. Canori.
Canori.
I wanna see what your alias is.
No, I can't tell you. I'd have to kill you. On page four, where I was talking about the area treated and redesigned, I think that was when I specifically asked Mr. Walsh if he would consider redesigning the project as if it was entirely in the floodplain. And he adamantly said no before I finished my sentence, so I, I kinda liked, kinda get that in there, 'cause I thought that was kind of important. It was a quick, quick draw and a quick answer. Okay?
So, just add, as if it were, as if it were entirely within the floodplain.
Yes.
To the first half. Okay.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions or comments on the minutes?
Nope.
Does somebody wanna make a motion to approve the minutes of June 17th, 2024?
Still moved.
Moved by Judy.
Second.
Second by Bob, with that one correction of Judy's name, which I did find it.
Sorry.
I think it's a test.
All those, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. The other thing we have for tonight is returning some money for peer review. This is for the Darwin 40B peer review refund. Remember Judy Conroy stepping down at this point? There's a amount remaining in the fund of $2,685.55, and normally, once the case is closed on our part, where the zoning board denied the, the application, it's proper to return the funds to the applicant. The applicant had put up 20, over $22,000 on that. Patrick, do you have anything to add on that?
No, that's exactly it. So, typical board procedure, need the board to vote to release the funding, and then we'll go through our, you know, accounting, get that money back.
Okay. Does somebody wanna make a motion to refund the amount of $2,685.55 to Wall Street Development for peer review on Darwin Commons 40B?
Still moved.
Moved by Bob.
Second.
Second by Tim. Any further discussion on returning the funds? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just went down to Conservation to see where they're at. I don't know what recess or...
So, we'll just...
Chill.
Yeah, we'll be in recess for a few, few minutes until the applicant gets there. We usually don't do that. This is unusual. But it will not, it will not be long.
I feel like I was...
I am sorry, I thought the applicant was down the hall. The applicant is about a half hour away, so what we're going to do is, we're going to probably open this, open the 40A hearing, which is the non-40B hearing. We won't take any testimony, and we'll continue that as the board has the right to continue it. And then the 40B hearing, we have, we're checking right now to see how much time, how much time we have on that, which, Lauren's checking right now on that. So, this was sort of unexpected.
So, what do you, what would you say? Are you gonna table it for tonight, or what?
Yeah. What's that? I didn't hear you.
You're gonna table it for tonight?
Yeah, but what we're gonna do is, we're gonna open it, because legally, we have to open the hearing, so we'll open the hearing and then...
Continue.
Continue it. And then we also have the 40B hearing for the same property, you know, which you're all aware of. And then, well, we're gonna find out how long we have.
We have...
We have until August 30th?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, August 7th, we should, is that, how's our agenda looking for August 7th?
It's just the cases we had today, unfortunately.
Yes. Do you have a procedural question? Yeah.
Judy Conroy, 455 Elm Street. I'm of, of the understanding now that you're gonna take no testimony. There are people here who've come three hours to possibly hear this case and make a comment, and I feel that they have the rights and the opportunity to make this statement because they've traveled quite far.
Okay.
More than one. I think there's another gentleman here.
Okay.
And all these people are here, and...
Yeah.
It's not our fault, it's not your fault, it's the applicant's fault. He's not here. He knows, I don't care if Napanza didn't happen, he should've been here, and I, I won't use the language I would like to, but, too bad. Too bad. Do what you have to do procedurally, but open it. These people are here, they wanna speak. Listen to them, please. Thank you.
No, I, I understand that, so... Okay. I think that's a, that's a good point, so...
So...
Okay. So, first thing we're gonna do is, we're gonna continue the 40B case. So, does somebody wanna continue case number 22-11? That's the 40B case for 9 and 15 Pinnacle Drive until August 7th, 7:00 PM here at Town Hall.
Still moved.
Moved by Tim.
Second.
Second by Bob. Any further discussion on continuing that case? Okay. All those in favor of continuing that, and we still have an extension of time until the end of August, so we're okay on that. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, so carried. Okay. Now, the new case is case number 24-11, Wall Street Development Corp.